Good evening, I would like to call the order of the Kaiser City Council. It is Monday, October 21st, 2019, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counselor Herrera.
Here.
Counselor Parsons.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Reed.
Here.
Counselor Kohler.
Is excused.
And Counsel President Freeman.
Is also excused tonight.
And Chief Counsel Wolfer.
Thank you very much. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Tonight, we're going to start off with special orders of business, and we have with us tonight a presentation from Travel Salem. We have Angie Onnabucci from Travel Salem, and she's going to talk to us about the work for promoting travel and tourism in our fabulous region. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council for having me here today. Can you hear me okay on the mic?
We can.
Okay, pull it a little closer.
Just a little bit closer, yep.
Hopefully that's a little bit better.
Got it, yep.
So, thank you for the kind introduction. I'm the president and CEO of Travel Salem, and I brought with me tonight Irene Bernards, who's our executive vice president and director of marketing and public relations. And we're on a little tour of the county, the two-county region, actually, taking the conversation of tourism out into the region. We want to share with you some of the things we've been working on, some of the results we're driving, and hopefully have a conversation with you about some of your priorities and things like that. So, we're really delighted to be here with you tonight. I would encourage you to interrupt me as much as you need to. There's a lot of content I'm going to share with you, so I'm going to kind of try to speed through for sake of time and to respect your evening. But if you do have questions, I would love to take a moment to answer those for you. So, why do we have this slide here where the Middle Lamont Valley is at the beginning of adventure across the world? Because that's the perspective we have to take as we promote the Marion and Polk County region as a premier tourism destination. And we do believe that premier adventure does begin right here in the Middle Lamont Valley. Travel Salem is a nonprofit. We're technically called a destination marketing management organization, also known as a DMMO, and we're formed like a Chamber of Commerce. So, we are a 501(c)(6) organization. And our goal is to drive economic development for our communities. This is a chart that shows the breakdown of tourism dollars in some major communities across the state of Oregon. And we wanted to kind of share with you sort of how we stack up. So, you can see Portland there at the top. They're the big gorilla. Their actual budget is actually closer to $30 million a year now. So, these numbers are a little bit old. But we're squished down there between Lincoln City and Medford in terms of the size of our budget, which is about $1.5 million. And as you are probably aware, marketing is a function of reach and frequency. And purchasing that reach and frequency is expensive. So, marketing is all about a function of budget. But Travel Salem does work really hard to be innovative in how we approach the work that we do to leverage the dollars that we receive. Our revenue sources are split. As you will see here, we have a variety of different revenue streams. We do try to keep a very diversified mix of sources. Our primary funding comes from a contract with the city of Salem, which is funded through the transient occupancy tax, so the room tax dollars that are collected in Salem. And we get about 25% of that. You can see that we also have a good chunk of funding from Marion and Polk Counties. Those funds are from their lottery dollars and go to support regional tourism efforts. We get wine country plate money, which I'll talk about in a minute as well. Our membership program has about 500 members in it, and that produces a good amount of dollars as well. And the Willamette Valley Visitors Association, which is WAVA, they're listed at the top in the red section. That is another partnership that I will talk about. What I do want to mention about the city of Salem dollars there, that million dollars, those are restricted dollars. So, we are not able to spend that money to market anything outside of the Salem city limits. So, it's really, really imperative that we have these other funding streams that allow us to work in a regional capacity, because as you're aware, visitors do not see or recognize geopolitical boundaries. So, we have to market and promote this destination as a whole. And we use all of these funding streams to make sure we can do that as seamlessly as possible. Tourism is considered the front door to economic development. And what we mean by that is that any executive that relocates a business here first came here as a visitor. And tourism does connect every corner of our economy, from visitors coming here or business visitors, corporate customers, large groups, conventions and conferences, sports teams. They all use services in our community, whether it's dry cleaners or they get their tires serviced at LaSchwab and so forth. So, tourism does connect to every corner in our economy. In the state of Oregon, tourism is in the top three. I think it's the second largest industry in the state of Oregon. $12 billion in direct travel spending, over 115,000 direct tourism jobs. Here in the Middle Lamont Valley, the economic impact looks like $603 million. So, that's more than half a billion dollars in travel spending here in Marion and Polk Counties. And that includes 6.5 million overnight visitors. And we drive 7,100 direct tourism jobs as well. And you can see the stats there on the right, the difference between Marion and Polk Counties and how that shakes out. The average spend per day at $132 or $83 and the stay, 2.7 nights roughly in Marion County, is very, very important. Our entire purpose for all the marketing that we do is to lengthen the stay of the visitor. The longer they stay here, the more money they leave in our communities and the more jobs they create. This is what 7,100 tourism jobs would look like. So, it's a very critical component to our region's economy. And tourism is very unique because it provides diversified jobs across the sectors. So, you've got part-time and seasonal employment, which is really important for seniors and students and so forth. We've got full-time jobs, family wage jobs and so forth. So, that diversification is really important for the health of a local economy. Transient occupancy tax, so this is what's being collected in Salem in the dark blue and in the light blue is Marion and Polk Counties as a whole. So, you can see the majority of the room taxes being generated by Salem properties. And the trend has been upwards. So, we've been on a really powerful swing. The economy's been very healthy. Things are starting to flatten out just a little bit. Leverage is something else that Travel Salem tracks. So, it's a term we use to describe donated products and services for the things that we secure, services and items and products that we secure that leverage the cash that we receive. So, we get donated advertising and publicity services, professional services and so forth that are listed there. And in 1819, we produced more than $3 million in secured donated products and services. So, what is the bottom line about tourism? Tourism really is all about jobs and quality of life. And it's a great, exciting story to talk about. How does this region differentiate from our competition? So, one of the things that we recently looked at is Salem. And Salem is qualified here, but as our region, okay, so that's Marion and Polk Counties there, Albany, and you can see across the spectrum there. How do we stand out against our competition? So, many people think of Bend as the brewery destination in Oregon, right? They have a ton of breweries and beer happening there. Well, we've got the same amount happening here, actually. In Yamhill County, they're known for their wineries, and they do. They have a ton of wineries, but so do we. And then you can also see that we have a really strong share of heritage and recreation and farmers markets and so forth. So, what you notice right away is that Salem is very well-rounded. Our region is very well-rounded in terms of the types of product that we offer. And that's a very, very strong market position to be in. So, we're really excited about that. Here's some other things that we look at in terms of how our community stacks up and what gives us a competitive advantage. So, if you look at Salem specifically, the Oregon State Capitol is a critical component of what brings visitors to this area. Our abundance of cultural heritage assets and so forth, as you go down the list there. The Mento Brown Island Park System, which is the largest park system in the United States, urban park system, larger than Central Park. Our location is critical. We have a Salem Area Sports Commission that I'll talk about in a moment. But on the regional side of things, there are two of Oregon's top attractions right here in our communities, the Woodburn Company Stores and the casino. And that's also a really wonderful place to be. But we have Silver Falls State Park, the top, it's the Trail of, the Ten Falls Trail, Waterfall Trail. That's in the top 10 waterfall trails in the country, right here in our backyard. And our baseball, you know, wonderful baseball arena here in Kaiser, our gardens, we have more than any other part of Oregon and so forth. We have an extremely rich bounty of product to market here to draw the visitors from all over the world. And I will remind you that we here in Salem, Kaiser, Woodburn, Marion and Polk Counties, we're competing with Rome and Australia and France and everywhere else across the world to bring the visitor here to have them decide and choose our destination to come and spend their dollars. So, how do we do that? We work really hard on a variety of different channels in our marketing and communication section. And one of those ways is our visitor information network. So, we have a variety of different locations that are listed up there. A couple of them are 24/7 visitor centers, so the Best Western Plus Mill Creek Inn and maybe that's the only, oh, the Holiday Inn, excuse me. Those are 24/7 visitor centers. And our goal is to, as visitors come through those locations, to give them as much information as possible, to encourage them to stay. And that goes again back to lengthening the visitor's stay. So, sometimes visitors are coming through Salem or this area to go to Bend or to go to the coast. And our job is to try to convince them to stay here. So, we had almost 300,000 visitors we served last year, which was up 42%. That's based, that increase is based on our new location downtown Salem on the corner of Liberty and State Streets. So, that's really helped the visibility of how we can connect with the consumer. We produce a visitor's guide, which I handed out a sample of that to you. This is our 2019 guide, but we are in production right now for our 2020 guide, which should be coming out soon. We produce 140,000 of these and distribute them to a proprietary distribution network of 800 locations in Oregon, Washington, California, and British Columbia. We also send them all over the world as they're requested. Our website, travelsalem.com, is a wealth of information and lots of video content on there, itineraries, events happening in the area. So, almost 430,000 user sessions last year. Our e-communications, we have a variety of newsletters and our blog, which creates content that also pushes back to our website. Our social media efforts are focused primarily on Facebook and Instagram. And these are some examples of some of the posts that we've had recently. We do focus on three pillars. We focus on recreation, culinary, and cultural heritage. And so, you can see a variety of those there. This, for example, was our most liked and shared Instagram post this last year, and that's of Opal Creek. I don't know if that Henline Falls, that's not Henline Falls, is it?
No.
On our public relations side, this, we have a full-time staff person that's working to secure publicity in a variety of different media, whether it's broadcast, print, or other. And so, we secured almost $1.5 million worth of coverage last year. 55 million reach and impressions on that coverage. We do print advertising. Those are a couple of different examples of that. We also work with the Oregon Film Commission to help them scout locations for movies or even commercials. And so, these are some of the projects that we've supported over the years. And the one on the left-hand side there that says Harley Davidson, that's a really cool story. Irene was the one who actually took that call from a guy who had been driving through Oregon. And he kind of came through this area and he fell in love with the spot next to a tree. And he wanted her to help him find the tree. And believe it or not, she found that tree. She's remarkable. So, but that effort of hers secured, you know, 45 film folks, production crew coming in for over a week. And that's a lot of economic impact when they came into town. So, this really does matter a lot. Video creation, really, really important. This is, video content really is the driver that helps folks who are not familiar with our region, helps them understand what we have to offer and is a powerful form of action for them to actually book their trip. So, we created some new content, three different videos focused on recreation and culinary. We do destination development work as well to help create new projects, campaigns, sometimes even brick and mortar projects as well. We created a tri-county charm trail that was featured in 1859. That is still going. We have more than 15,000 charms in circulation right now, about 35 partners involved with that across Marion Polk and Yamhill Counties. We also created the Salem Ale Trail, and about 2,600 roughly passports are in circulation right now for that. So, those are some of those different projects. The Willamette Valley Visitors Association that I mentioned to you earlier is a co-op of those counties that are listed there at the top of that slide. And those different destinations work together collectively to market the Willamette Valley. And we get funding through Travel Oregon to do that. So, about $1 million every year to do that. One of the major projects this group worked on recently was something we call a Slice of Oregon, and it's that photo on the left there. And that's actually about a 16-foot wine bottle, acrylic wine bottle that has these slices of experiences that are highlighted in between. And we've showcased that in Portland, Seattle, Boise, San Jose airports, and reached almost, you know, 7.5 million visitors with that. What's really cool about that is we also did a raffle with that Slice of Oregon campaign. And so, folks who entered to win, we, I can't remember how many, 10,000 or so entries in that, we just took 2,000 of those and looked at where they're coming from. So, you can see that we're really getting a broad reach into the eastern half of the United States, which is a great audience for us to gain more recognition in. And I did just want to mention on this slide here on the right, that Capitol Christmas Tree campaign. We created 200 ornaments that were hidden in the Willamette National Forest, and they were all geo-tagged. So, when visitors found them, they would log them and with all 200 were located. That was a really fun social media campaign. Really quick, we're working on a marketing and development toolkit, which will be resources inside this kit that communities can use to really dive deeper into their tourism efforts. And we're happy to support them on that work. So, it has all those different components in it, and we'll be doing, taking that toolkit around the region and into communities to work with, communities specifically to help them in these different areas. And we should be live with that probably in the spring. All of our reports and research are available on our website, travelsalem.com/contactus, and then you'll find all our reports there. On the convention, events, and sports side, huge business by being able to capture teams and groups coming into our communities. So, we have a small sales team. We've got one full-time salesperson right now. We're hiring for a sports person, which is an open position. But we work to secure these large groups that come in, and we create itineraries for them pre and post-conference and work with the meeting planners. These are a small sample of some of the groups we worked with this last year. You can see how many delegates we brought in through that book of business right there. That book of business was worth about $23 million last year, and it drove about 30,000 room nights. So, very high-quality business. And we, last year, also booked almost $9 million in future business as well. We have a sports commission, the Salem Area Sports Commission, which has about 21 commissioners on it. And they're working really hard to evaluate opportunities that we can go after and secure for this area. We participate in these two different conventions to go ahead and meet with meeting planners, group planners that are booking their teams and their tournaments and to try to secure that business. We also have a convention services program. So, when those large groups come into town, we provide service and support to them. So, for instance, the Wally Bayham Caravan Club Airstream Rally came into the state fairgrounds, and there were airstreams from all 50 states in the United States, plus some international ones. And I don't know how they got them here, but they were here. So, lots of hard work on that side. I'll leave you with this thought, and it's something that we all use kind of probably regularly. A rising tide lifts all boats. But in, I can't think of a better example than that than tourism and how a unified approach is really about partnering across our region and to do this work better together. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. That was chock full of information. And thank you for the information you left with us that we can read more at our leisure. Questions? Looking down the row here, I've got a couple. One, World Track and Field 2021. How are we going to bring visitors from Eugene here without airlift?
Yeah. So, we have been working with Track Town USA for a couple of years on this. They recently hired an executive director. He's actually run the World Games in China and a couple of other markets previously. So, he's very well experienced. And they're still kind of getting everything organized. We have applied for seven locations in our Marion and Polk County region to host teams as training sites. And we're waiting for, to see if those are going to be selected. But we're also being very proactive with the Track Team folks, Track USA Team folks, to market our destination. And from what I understand, and this is coming from the new guy that's running that whole World Games event, he said that it will be the biggest media event that has ever happened in Oregon and will ever happen in Oregon, according to him. There'll be more than 3,000 journalists here from all over the world, broadcasting live, streaming live, sharing our communities with folks from all over the world. So, we're really intent on not only marketing to the folks that are coming for the World Games, but getting our product in front of folks so that they will want to come back another time. So, it's kind of a multi-tiered approach, and we'll have more information on that, I would say, probably in the next four or five months.
Sorry, we are broadcast. Sorry. And you thought you were going to be all sit back.
I know.
Darn it. So, Travel Oregon is putting together a statewide plan. And within that statewide plan, there will be a portion of that for the Willamette Valley. And the Willamette Valley Visitors Association then will put together a plan for the Willamette Valley, which will then funnel down to Travel Salem as well. And that's going to significantly impact our communities. We all remember the 2017 eclipse and the tremendous amount of planning that went into that. And if it's predictable, it's preventable. So, we know that people will be coming. How can we make sure that we, as a community, are very connected? We know that you're going to be very proactive in this, but we're going to need to know and be able to disseminate information to residents throughout this community about what to expect during that time period.
Yeah, we can share, once we have the plan, we can share that with you and what to expect. Like the eclipse, I think all of us did such a great job in preparation that I think a lot of people stayed home. I don't know if you noticed that?
Yep.
So, for this, though, there's no option in that. They're definitely going to Eugene. So, as soon as we have our plan in place, we'll be happy to share that with you.
And are you going to have some forums or is Travel Oregon planning any forums where community members can come and listen and give input? Because this is going to affect our lives for at least a couple, three weeks.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know that information, but I can find out and get back to you on that.
That would be great. We would love to be able to get the word out to people in our community about how this will impact. On the one hand, opportunity, yes. We can show off what we know is a fabulous place to live, work, and play. We got that part. But we also know traffic is something we enjoy so much, not. So, people want to be able to plan ahead for what they're going to have, you know, if you're going to have a big family reunion, maybe that's not the weekend to do it.
Right.
So, things like that.
And I would also mention, you mentioned commercial air service. So, there is a group of folks who are working on trying to bring in commercial air service to the McNary Field over there at the Salem Airport. We are hoping that we would be able to have a commercial carrier or two selected by spring of this next year. And when I say selected, they're actually selecting us. But we're trying to lure them with a really appealing package, incentive package, so that we would have commercial air service in place by the time the Games would happen, so folks could fly directly in here and stay here. So, but we know that we will get rooms here. I mean, this part of the region is going to be packed for that whole time. Yeah.
Well, we already know that, you know, our hotels do a tremendous business already with the events that you bring in, that our community brings in. Our business base is continuing to thrive. The hotel that opened up at Kaiser Station has been busy from the get-go. And that's with very minimal hoopla. It just, oh, good, it's there, boom, people are booking. So, when you're adding additional people on top of that, I think letting the folks in our community know what's going on, I think is going to be a real plus. The other question I wanted to ask, I'm going to shift gears now. The $3 million you talked about in donated goods and services, as you talked about that as leverage, so is this an investment on the part of the businesses because they recognize they're going to get a return on investment by participating with donated goods and services to travel and tourism? Is that kind of the idea?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, here it is.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, so, the largest amount of leverage that we generate is through our public relations efforts. So, that $1.5 million in coverage that we've secured in a variety of different publications or whatever is part of that $3 million there. And the Willamette Valley Visitors Association is another good chunk of that as well. The Visitor's Guide, for instance, that is produced 100% by advertising dollars. So, businesses that want to get in front of those visitors can purchase an ad or a listing in the guide. And they're making that choice because it's a really cost-effective way to get in front of 140,000, well, printed copies, but the circulation is much higher than that. So, yes, our partner businesses and partners across the region do want to engage. They want to donate rooms and product for travel riders that are coming through. So, yeah, they make those choices. And we're really thankful for that because we are much stronger as a community because of their commitment and dedication and donations to us. Yeah.
And at the end of the day, if they look at their marketing budget, they're seeing a return because when they do invite people to come in, you know, again, to experience our fabulous community, they know they're going to want to come back and bring their friends.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Questions? Anyone else? Thank you so much. Thank you for leaving your, one more time, your website is?
Travelsalem.com.
Travelsalem.com. And thank you so much for coming and being a part of our evening. And we look forward to working with you in promoting this fabulous region.
And we'll follow back up with you regarding the 2021 Games.
Thank you. We really appreciate that.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go to our committee reports. We have three folks here from our committees. And I'm going to go with Mike DeBlossi from Traffic Safety.
Evening, Madam Mayor, councilors, staff. So, at the September Traffic Safety Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, it was brought to us the issue about basketball hoops on sidewalks. And so, after much discussion and questioning about, you know, what the problem is and what our abilities are as a city, we passed a motion that, I'll read this directly, that Traffic Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee would support allowing homeowners to install the hoops mounted in or behind the sidewalk or in the planter strip, subject to guidance and permit from the Public Works Department. And that motion was seconded and passed.
Well, we appreciate you taking the time for that issue. It's important that we give people options.
Yes.
That we're AD compliant.
Yes. All right. Thank you.
All right. Anything else from that meeting or any questions? I see a side conversation. So... You know, based on this recommendation from the Traffic Safety Bike Ped Committee regarding basketball hoops, it looks like that will then go to staff to see what that would look like in a practical application. Am I correct? I'm getting a head nod. Okay.
I would say one.
Yes. Counselor Herrera?
Thank you, Madam. Make this clear, that you're saying there cannot be any, there's no way the portals could be on the sidewalk?
That's, we're recommending they either put them behind or in front. Yeah. I will bring that up again, just to make sure I read that again to you. So, mounted in or behind. So, when we say in, mounted, that would be something where it's not blocking passage and it is high enough that it is not a hazard to someone who is walking by. So, it's not as if a portable one would be set just sitting on the sidewalk, which would be a... be set just sitting on the sidewalk and which would be a trip hazard or just a...
Okay, so if you get a street, not on the street, like a portable one cannot be in the street or just long as it's on the sidewalk?
Well, a portable one could be on the street, just as long as it's, but it's portable.
I just want to make sure, get it clear to that.
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
So, um, you've actually already taken action on it. They are prohibited in the sidewalk. They are, uh, only allowed if they're in active use. Remember that?
In the street.
Um, and so part of that discussion was how they might be allowed and how they would, then how we would develop standards for that. And what you're hearing from the, uh, Traffic Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee, uh, is, um, that basically they support that action that you have taken and that they, um, are supportive of us coming up with standards that we would then implement. For example, if they're in sidewalk, what we've talked about is then, then they have to expand the sidewalk, so they're not restricting, uh, passage in the sidewalk. But we will be developing those standards, um, and appreciate the reminder. That's what the side conversation.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, reporting on parks is Zyra Flores-Marin.
Hello, good afternoon. Um, so, um, good afternoon, Mayor Clark and City Council and Staff. That was in my notes. Um, so I, my name is Zyra and I live on 13th Avenue, and I am here to give a report on the City Ky, City of Kaiser's Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I am the representative of Claggett Creek Park and also, uh, Wallace House. And so we met on Tuesday, October 8th, and, uh, one of the first things that the board did is we approved a grant proposal request from Peggy and Jerry Moore, who are actually in the audience today, and they were representing the Peggy and Jerry Moore Community Garden. Um, it's across the parking lot next to the skate park. And, um, the grant request will be covering the cost of replacing their current garden beds, and it will be replacing them for, uh, treated lumber and also to make them deeper so that way they can plan for better crops, um, in the following years. And it will also be covering the cost of burnt chips and compost. Um, and then my favorite part of the meeting was that Peggy and Jerry shared with us all of the amazing work they've been doing in the last year. Uh, they're very active community members. If you guys haven't had a chance to talk to them, I definitely encourage you to do that. Um, they were the only community garden chosen by Marion Polk Food Share to be in a photo op, and, um, they brought a big photo of Jerry in the garden, and so that's something that I think we should all be really proud of, um, because they're being represented out in our community and they're doing a lot of work to make sure that we're getting food in people, on people's tables. Um, the other thing that we, well, actually that I reported on is that in Claggett Creek Park, there is an abandoned memorial. So I don't know if you've ever walked by there, but it's a chalice with like a climbing rose, and it's completely like, the, the roses have overgrown and taken over the chalice. And, um, so I did a little bit more digging and investigating, and it is, it's been there for a while, so it was put up in memory of someone from 19, who was born in 1911 up to 1992. Um, I wasn't really able to find any information on them, but this does bring up the question about what we should do when, um, memorial pieces are neglected in our parks. And so that's something that we will be looking further into, and, uh, staff will be looking to see if we can find, um, the family of this person to see if we can give them some options of what we can do with the memorial piece, so that way it's not just neglected and set to the side. Um, we also talked about the Kaiser Rapid Security and some issues we've been having with vandalism. And so, um, one of our members was going to be doing the report on that, but they weren't here, so we're going to continue that conversation at our next meeting. Uh, let's see what else. Um, members gave reports on our parks. There's nothing too substantial to report. Staff is really great about making sure that our parks are safe. Uh, they're kept clean, maintained, and just, um, open and enjoyable for our residents. Uh, so we're kind of getting ready to, uh, go on the winter season, and so they've been doing a lot of maintenance for that and making sure that, uh, we can get through the weather that's coming. And, uh, Robert Johnson gave us an update on the skate park, and so that's a really big project. We're super proud of that project. Um, it was completed on October 7th, and there's a lot of people there. I drive by here all the time, and it's always full of kids and adults, and so, um, that was something that came together very nicely, and, uh, we're all very proud of, um, the work that city staff put into that and of the end results of it. Uh, the shade sales, so, um, at the big, uh, the, the big toy, that's what it's called. Um, so the post went up and, uh, they, I don't know if, uh, Robert has put up the sales yet, but he was going to put them up for testing, and then once that was done, they were going to storm away until the summer days were back. And lastly, uh, we talked about rescheduling the parks tour. So that's something that we all really enjoyed. I know you, you all really enjoy going on that with us as well. And so unfortunately, due to the weather, we had to cancel it. So we were thinking of maybe rescheduling it for the spring and then having another one towards the end of the summer. There's been a lot of work that's been done at our parks, and we think that one time is not enough to see everything. So we were looking at maybe having two of those tours, one in the spring and one at the end of summer. Um, so if there are no other questions, that's my report for you all today.
Thank you very much. Um, and Tracy, would you put that on, uh, for planning for work sessions this spring? Um, I like that idea because as the parks are getting underway, um, in the spring season, that would be great for us to see the work that has been done.
Yeah, and there's a lot of projects that are expected to be done or almost fully done by the end of spring, so we thought it would be a good time for us to go and see those.
I don't, and if you have jack two going on a, another parks tour, I didn't think so.
That's what we thought.
And that, when it's, uh, hopefully a little sunnier and we have a little more light, because right now we, I, I asked Mr. Lawyer about, well, we could reschedule, and he goes, by the time y'all get here, it's dark. And I was like, good point. So, and the parks are closed after dark, so we don't want to be violating those rules. Um, any, uh, questions on any part of, uh, the report? So much going on. Thank you.
Lots of things happening, so.
Great. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And, um, for Planning Commission, uh, Frank Koster. Come on down. Good to see you, sir.
Yes. Good evening, my name is Frank Koster. Um, I reside in East Kaiser, off Allen Dale Road, 2085. Um, Madam Mayor and Councilman, uh, this evening I'm here to talk about, uh, our last meeting, October 9th, uh, Wednesday here. Uh, we were sworn in, uh, I was sworn in, and, uh, Jeremy Gents was sworn in, and we had a new, uh, president and vice president, uh, Matt Lar and Crystal Wilson, and so that will be changing. And, um, there was some discussion about the buildable lands inventory, the housing needs analysis. I've not, I've looked into it and I've, I've studied a lot of study in it, but I wasn't at that last meeting, so I can't really talk about, a lot about that. Uh, we could talk about it offline, you know, I can give you some of my thoughts. Um, we talked a lot about the options that the housing needs analysis came through, and, um, some of the, some of the recommendations came from other committees, like, uh, I think it's the Citizen Advisory Committee that, that, uh, recommended option two. And we, we did a lot of talking about that troubleshooting, what we could do, what we could not do with those options, uh, more specifically, uh, where the money could, would come from if we were to, to go into urban growth boundary. Um, we were informed that that's a different cut, pot of money that we don't have, so we can't go down that road. We can't look across the fence and say, what could we do? What could we look at? We can't do that. Okay, that's going to take some other money that we don't have right now. And so the option two was to stay with, stay with Salem and because of our 20-year, uh, buildables land. So as, there's a big, there's a big word that's called divorce, you know, to separate. You know, I think that, I think Kaiser is getting there, but we're not there yet, based on what I've seen and what I've read, you know? And, um, there's a, there's some things in the built, uh, housing needs analysis that I point, that I wrote down that I wanted to point out. 69% of Kaiser has one house, one lot, detached garage. That's 70%. You know, that's a, a large part of Kaiser. You know, the other half, 4% are townhouses, okay, and then seven, 27% is multi-housing. Okay, so I've talked with a lot of people. They have a lot of opinions about one house, one lot, you know? And if you look at the housing needs analysis, those people are aging in Kaiser. Okay, so they're, they're comfortable with that, and humans are creatures of habit. So when we do go to the urban growth boundary, you know, that's going to be a, a, a fight, I think, you know, for that. Um, let's see. Um, let's see. The city planner Nate Brown, uh, gave us some good information about, uh, our, our newest small business in Kaiser Station's, uh, In-N-Out Burger. You know, that seems to be a hot one. Uh, I myself have never been there to In-N-Out, so I'm, you know, I'm going to go see what this, what this scuttlebutt is, you know? And in addition, there's going to be some multi-housing in there. Okay, there's going to be some, some, some people are going to live in Kaiser Station, what I think is going to be millennials or something, not me, you know? But that, that's good to hear, you know, I like that. And then, um, uh, let's see, our next meeting is November 13th, you know? Uh, given that it was my first meeting and I've been on the, the committee for a couple of weeks, my, uh, my learning curve is very sharp. So if you have any questions, uh, be gentle.
Well, they weren't, they threw you right in here and said, here you go.
Yes, ma'am, they did. They said, you know, go learn. You know, I have a, I have a background in planning. I went to Port State, so I have a, I have a, a semi-clue. When I talk with Nate, he doesn't lose me, you know, I'm hanging on, I'm hanging on, you know? So I do have my thoughts, though, about, about urban growth boundaries and, and there's a lot of people, you know, the citizens that you talk with, and they want the short answer, you know, and it's not that simple. Yeah, I'm sure you know, Madam Mayor, that it, it takes different colors of money, you know, that, that, uh, system development fees just won't cut it, just won't get us there, you know? So you got to massage that information to them, you know, in doses, I think.
I would absolutely agree. This is, uh, this is not a sprint, it's a marathon with all of the nuances that go with that. And, um, first of all, welcome to the Planning Commission. Thank you for being willing to volunteer. We appreciate that. And, um, this is going to be a very nuanced discussion about what we look like as we grow both internally and externally, and over the next 10, 15, 20 years. You're right, this is not a six-month, hey, we got this figured out. If we did, we wouldn't be here, right? We'd go, done. But it's going to be, um, evolving for sure.
I agree.
Uh, questions from anyone? All right. Well, thank you. Uh, November 13th is the next meeting, and it is televised, and we encourage people to come and get involved with, uh, these great projects we are doing to plan our future.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
At this time, we're going to go to public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda for a public hearing. We have one public hearing tonight, which is an ordinance declaring a lien against a property located at 1551 Seber Street Northeast. So I don't have anybody signed up for public testimony, so I'll open it up to anybody who would like to come and, uh, speak with us about anything that is on your mind about Kaiser. All right. Then we will go on to the public hearing. Open the public hearing on ordinance declaring a lien against property located at 1551 Seber Street Northeast Kaiser and direct, directing the city recorder to enter such lien in the minor lien docket pursuant to ordinance number 94 dash 282 nuisance abatement procedure declaring an emergency. Mr. Wood?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'm obviously not the city manager, Chris Epley. He is away at the Institute of City Man, the International City Manager Association, uh, one of their regional meets. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney, Shannon Johnson. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim, Madam Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight we have, um, a nuisance abatement lien, and for some of the newer councilors, I don't think we've had one since some of you've been on. We used, I was thinking we have one, one per year, but that's probably not right, probably less than that. Um, and typically, these are situations that we just Ben and Shane and, and Nate work with people and eventually get compliance, but sometimes they just can't get compliance and the situation is bad enough that they have to turn to the very limited abatement budget, uh, to abate the nuisance. And in this one, we have, and I didn't put in the staff report, one of my favorite words, "puttricable garbage," which is like true garbage, the kind that attracts rats. Um, that's the kind of thing that we just don't, can't wait very long, so we, we need to clean that up. And there was other, other things in addition. Um, fortunately, the homeowner was able to find some volunteers, or the dollar amount would have been much more. We were able to just provide the, uh, drop boxes, either three or four 30-yard drop boxes, um, over the course of several weeks. And so you can see the lien amounts, uh, approximately $2,724.40, and the process allows for notice, um, both for the abatement, and if it's not abated, then we abate it, and then, uh, notice to pay the amount, and if it's not paid by the time period, then it goes to public hearing, uh, for placement of the lien in the municipal lien docket. So it's before you tonight, uh, for review and for public hearing, uh, and the recommendation is to take any public testimony that might be provided, and unless there's questions or concerns, adopt the ordinance which imposes the lien. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Okay. Um, is there anyone signed up for public testimony?
There's not.
There's no one signing up for public testimony? Is there anyone who would, uh, wish to address the council under this public hearing? All right, seeing none. Anything further before I close the public hearing? Close the public hearing? Councilor Herrera?
I'd like to make the, I move that the Kaiser City Council approve a bill for an ordinance declaring a lien against property located at 1551 Seber Street Northeast Kaiser, Oregon, and directing the city recorder to enter such lien in the minor lien docket pursuant to or, ordinance number 94 dash 282 nuisance abatement procedure declaring an emergency.
Second. It's a move down seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopted a bill for an ordinance declaring a lien against property owned, located at 1551 Seber Street Northeast Kaiser, Oregon, and directing the city recorder to enter such lien in the minor lien docket pursuant to ordinance number 94 dash 282 nuisance abatement procedure declaring an emergency. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously to absent. And that concludes our public hearings for tonight. We have nothing under administrative action. Councilor Herrera, would you, uh, read the consent calendar for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. All right. All we have is, uh, under consent calendar tonight, we have A, and that's approval of the October 7th, ni, 2019 City Council Regular Session Meeting.
All right, does anybody need to pull that for discussion? Everybody good? All right, uh, Councilor Herrera, do you want to move the consent calendar, please?
I'm, I'm sorry.
They just have to move.
No, I move that, uh, we approve the, uh, October 7th, 2019 Council Regular Session Minutes.
Second. The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with two absent. Then we will go on to our council liaison reports. Uh, Councilor Reed, can we start with you tonight?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, so one of the more interesting things that I, uh, did since the last city council meeting is I attended a associate, social media roundtable, and this was a roundtable discussion hosted by, um, by Liberty House, and it featured a guest speaker, uh, by the name of Colin Karchner, who had interestingly spoken at both of the middle schools and at McNary. Uh, McNary right before this actual roundtable, so I got to see him twice in one day, and it was fascinating, really. And, um, Kaiser was very well represented in that roundtable. Uh, we had, uh, Officer Running and, uh, Danielle Bethel and Shark, uh, Shani Starr, and of course, Rich Duncan is the, the chair, chair of that. So we did Kaiser proud in that. And basically what that was about was about educating both kids and parents to be able to be aware of some of the dangers of social media and phone usage, and, and, and one of the, the... And one of the elements of this was it wasn't about demonizing social media for kids, but it was more about an education kind of process as to what kinds of things are we doing to our youth by just turning them loose without training them to use this magnificent tool. So it was really an interesting discussion. We had voices from many, many different facets of the community. And it was a really interesting wake-up call, and it was wonderful that we were having this community discussion. So we've got some good ideas to run with on that, and that will continue, that discussion will continue. But that was a very, very interesting discussion. Also, I attended the McNary Hall of Fame. Congratulations to our McNary alumni and former coaches, a coach that was inducted into the McNary Hall of Fame. That was a proud night. Also, went to homecoming, so we won homecoming, and that was thrilling, and it was a good game. And then I also saw the Kaiser Homegrown Theater's Hitchhiker, and sorry, wrong number. There were two one-act plays that were done as a stage reading, and that was, yes, thank you. This was the program. And anyway, it was just, there's so much to do in Kaiser. I was listening to this Travel Salem presentation, just thinking, you know, we have plenty to do in Kaiser just from what we have here as far as our resources. So that was a lot of fun. And then coming up, we have the Festival Advisory Board's committee meeting next Monday. And we would encourage anybody who has any kind of holiday events that they would like to get on the calendar to make sure to contact the city and get those in there for the plan. But that's all. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate that. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last Tuesday, I was able to go to the Hope Builders Breakfast at the convention center that is for the Habitat for Humanity. Great presentation, really a great program, and very, it just hits my heart because I know how important having a home and the roof over the heads of your family is so critical to so many different angles of success. And it just echoes back to the Marion County Reentry Initiative, the information we're doing with the homeless, and obviously, what I do on a day-to-day basis. So it just really is a great theme that I'm enjoying working within. And I also was able to go to the McNary, the Hall of Fame Awards Dinner. That was really neat, actually. Be excited to have a team that's like a winning team and has a history of being a winning team. And congratulations to McNary for a great win. That's fun to watch. And then we have the Kaiser Festival Advisory Board on Monday. Looking forward to it. Please get your information in now, because that's a lot of stuff going on that calendar. Nice to be able to pre-plan that, so that's about it.
Thank you very much. Counselor Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Traffic Safety Pedestrian Bikeways Committee meeting for Dan as he flew off to Europe. And you heard the report from Mike de Blasey. He actually reported on September and October, basically, they just talked about the different projects that go on in Kaiser and how they'd like to be a little bit a part of that. But there's a lot of discussion. They had a couple of members that weren't here, and each of them were assigned different things. And so they report on those, and basically, they're just still going through the movements of, you know, safe routes to school and, you know, the bicycles and stuff, so that's always kind of a fun meeting. Then I attended the Volunteer Coordinating Committee last week. We interviewed eight people and moved them, I'm sorry, we interviewed nine. And I think eight names are moved forward for us to fill vacancies on our committees. So we're getting them slowly but surely. We still have a couple more. So go online and look for the city Kaiser, and you'll see there's always volunteer opportunities. So get your application in. Also, I attended the McNary Dinner Hall of Fame. My girls actually went to school with Nikki Hayhurst and played ball with her for a lot of years, so I went to support her. And that was kind of nice to see her there. And then coming up in a couple of weeks, well, we have a work session on Monday that I will not be at, so sorry to say I will be out of town. And then after that, we start all over again for the month in our committee, so that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Counselor Herrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had the double meeting day of Tuesday with Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Committee and Parks, which Zaida does a great job. I mean, she covered it perfect, I mean, pretty much, you can't do any better than that. I enjoy those meetings because they're pretty active, and she was very thorough. Thanks, Zaida. Also, I attended Wes, I kept saying Wes, but Wes Kaiser Neighborhood Association meeting. And that was pretty fun. I went in for my counselor, Smith, who was kind of... But that was, it's always good to go there, because they always have cookies, so. Also, on the 14th, I attended the Resilient Communities Committee with the school district and was hosted by Shaney Starr over at Casa. And that's, we're going to do a follow-up on Wednesday morning with Resilient Communities, and that's the bigger groups. It's hard to explain all those groups, but I think we're all, some of us are in some of those resilient communities. And I appreciate everybody, the council, that showed up at our Athletic Hall of Fame. Those are very special events, and congratulations to Luke Atwood, Tom Smythe, and of course, Nikki, who is just one of my favorite athletes of all time in Kaiser. She's amazing. And of course, the 2001 football team, which was the most fun football team ever to watch of all time I've ever seen. And so I also wanted to talk a little bit about beacons. The beacons was the program that I'm involved in, where we try to, eventually, we're trying to fund anybody who wants to play sports in any of the six high schools in Kaiser. Now, as far as Kaiser's concerned, McNary High School, we've chosen our beacons that are going to be honored. And I wanted to announce that Ted Ignakus, who has passed away this year, has won them. And then Gib Gilmore, and the community award goes to, well-deserved, to Bob and Pam Zalinski, as we know, they've contributed. And those awards are given to people that have contributed to high school athletics throughout, not just years, I mean, almost, really, literally decades, and those are very special. And that event's coming up at February, and I'll keep you in the loop on that. Also, I have a quick, oh yeah, Kaiser United today was great. I mean, it was well-represented. And I love those things, because we pick up so much information. In fact, I'm going to announce one for somebody today who couldn't make it, I think. Kaiser Elementary is having their first movie night ever in the T-SOC for their, and that's another acronym. T-SOC is for Community Outreach, so-and-so. Anyway, she was going to come, and she never could make it tonight. But I encourage those folks to come in front of the camera and spread the news. But anyway, they're starting a movie night, and their first one's going to be October 25th at Kaiser Elementary, seventy-five cents per person. And it's kind of a fundraiser. They're trying to, the parent club, pardon?
Toy Story 4.
Toy Story 4, you even know the movie. Oh, wow, good for you. Well, I think it's great to support, I know that Kennedy has done that, and they're fundraisers, and that's been really fun. And also, I spent Sunday up in Seattle, and that was a lot of fun, so. You know, I got to tell you one thing, though. The Oregon fans were really, you know, they're supposed to be rowdy. They were really well-behaved, so that's kind of weird. Congratulations to the Beavers, too, also. That was a great win for both of our teams. I thought I'd throw that in, because there's folks that actually listen to that. So thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I think that's it for me.
All right. Yeah, wait for Oregon to represent this weekend. That was fun, on both games.
Yeah, it was very exhausting.
You, Counselor Wolfert?
All right. Thank you so much. Just have a couple of things to add. Did all the cool stuff happening around town. The Kaiser Heritage Foundation met on the 8th. We've hired Betty Bolin as our executive administrative assistant. To have somebody there to really follow through with the work that needs to be done. When you have a great organization, at some point, you get someone who's got to devote time and expertise there, and she was a great pick. On the 9th, I attended the Strategic Economic Development Corporation luncheon, and it was on the hemp industry. It was extremely interesting, talking about the varieties of materials, especially the fiber, the production of the CBDs, and just what that industry is evolving into, hearing from Department of Agriculture, a local farmer, and businesses about what is all involved in our hemp industry that is growing quickly in Oregon. On this last Saturday, we had the monthly coffee with Kathy. We had updates on transit. Thank you to our representative on the board of directors, Colleen Bush, for keeping us very well-informed on how well transit has gone, especially with the expansion to Saturday service and later-night service, the number of rides that people are taking advantage of, and more importantly, more and more people being able to get to where they need to go for business and for their social needs as well. And we also heard about the skate park planning, Gubser Neighborhood, and Kaiser Revitalization Plan. Great conversation. And just want to add that, make sure everybody knows that we are not having a work session tomorrow. The hosts in the McNary Oaks community did cancel, so you can take that off your calendars for tomorrow. Coming up tomorrow at lunch, I have SCATS, which is the Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study. We'll be talking about projects coming up that we are ranking for the next Transportation Improvement Plan. We have a couple of projects in that mix, so I will be lobbying hard for those. Wednesday night, I'll be attending the Mayor's Coalition, and it'll be hosted by the mayor of Carlton. This is a three-county gathering of mayors from around our region, so we can help each other out, give advice, shoulder to cry on, somebody to celebrate with, whatever we need, with these great volunteers from across our region. The Family Building Blocks Luncheon will be on the 24th. Another great organization that helps provide for the needs of children and families in our community. And then after that, the Mibwolamit, what was the Mibwolamit Homeless Initiative, now is the Mibwolamit Valley Homeless Alliance. It's going to take me a while to make that transition. We'll continue work on the development of the continuum of care. So we are working on the governance structure that will become the organization that will receive funding to provide services for people in our community who are homeless, housing insecure, and need supportive services. On the 29th, there'll be an open house right here at the Civic Center to look at designs for Delight Street. So I'm taking Mr. Lawyer's thunder here. Very excited to get this project. We're actually talking about going to construction. We've talked about it for a lot of years, and it's going to become a reality, so I'm very excited about that. 6 o'clock, be here. And then on November 1st, the groundbreaking for Hope Has a New Address. Union Gospel Mission will be doing the groundbreaking for their new men's mission on Commercial Street, just across from where they're building the new police station in the city of Salem. So invite the community to come and be a part of that celebration as they begin to build this facility. It's not about celebrating the facility, it's about all the good work that's going to happen in that space to serve people in our community. And finally, on Saturday the 2nd, the Kaiser Art Association will have their Black, White, and Gray Show. Now, they do receptions for each of the shows that happens in that gallery, but the Black, White, and Gray Show is a special one. And it's in the evening every year, 6 o'clock, come on down. If you think that Black, White, and Gray, how dull, oh, you haven't seen anything then. Come and check out the amazing pieces that will be hung in this display in the month of November. So with that, that concludes my report. So I will go now to other business. This time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy Davis?
I have nothing, thank you.
Chief Teague? Bill Lawyer?
Just one thing real quick on the shade cell project at the Big Toy. Contractor is supposed to be here, I believe, Wednesday to fix the surfacing. Both the holes that were cut in it for the columns or the posts for the shade cells and some other repairs they need to do. And I'm not positive, but I think the sales are coming Thursday. And so contractor put those up, and as was mentioned earlier, we'll leave them up for two, three weeks, let everybody see them before we take them down for the winter.
Nate Brown?
Everybody's talked about my stuff, so I don't have to.
You're welcome.
Shannon Johnson?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
The only thing I would add is to continue to conserve water. We're in the heart of the sewer reset period. So if you can conserve as much water as possible now, your sewer bill will be a lot lower for the coming year. Thank you.
All right. Good reminder. Thank you very much. Written communications, I have one, and I'm going to ask Tracy to make copies for you, because this is a very interesting opportunity. This is a letter from Mayor Bemis, the mayor of Gresham. Says, "I'm writing to formally ask you to take Park in a historic and uniting project for the state of Oregon. The Who We Are Project seeks to unite our state around the stories of ordinary people whose experiences embody the American fabric. As a part of this project, we want to give you, as the mayor of your city, the opportunity to discuss what makes your city unique and vibrant." How long do they have? "The Who We Are Project will give you and the person you choose a chance to express the history, cultural vibrancy, and untold stories of your city and their life. If you choose to accept, I am asking you to formally recommend someone in your city or region whom you believe is the most interesting person. This individual will tell their story from their lens with a focus on who we are as Oregonians. This project will interview individuals and communities in every corner of the state in hopes of telling our shared story as Oregonians. In a day and age where politics and media are divisive, caustic, and harsh, I am launching a program to elevate people and the stories that are worth being told. I'm hoping you will accept this challenge and join me with this, join me to help write yet another chapter in Oregon's story." Please forward to my assistant. So I'm going to send this out to all of you, and I would like you to think about who that person should be to go with me for doing this storytelling. And then I will make a selection, or we will collectively make a selection of someone to do this, and I will accept this opportunity to tell Kaiser's story as part of the Oregon story. So that is a tremendous opportunity, I believe. All right. Where's my agenda? There it is. Agenda input. So we have a work session next Monday at 7:00 PM on emergency preparedness. We will meet 7:00 PM on November 4th in regular session. We will not have a work session on November 11th, although it is a Monday, it is also a federal holiday to celebrate and honor our veterans. I encourage everyone to participate in that way. And then we will meet again on November 18th at 7:00 PM in regular session. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Oh, yes, one more thing. Thank you for pointing, because I passed it. Community dinner starts at 5:00 at St. Edward's, and it's on this Wednesday, so come down for a great community meal. And who is cooking?
The McNary Culinary Department is doing, and they do fabulous work. It will be very, it will be wonderful.
Be a great meal and a great time to come and bring a friend and enjoy time together. All right. Thank you very much for reminding me about that. The time is 8:09, and we are adjourned.